Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And just some housekeeping notations. Sir, your light is a little blinding to us up here. Thank you. And if you could please put your phones on silence or turn them off. Thank you. And with that, we move on to the real call. Council members Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milam.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Potem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas. Present. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for that. So we'll move on with our first item on the agenda, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A: Approval of Meeting Minutes for September 30th, October 3rd, 4th, and 11th. Item B: Bills and Communications to Approve Claims in the Total Amount of $3,271,034.15. Item C: Resolution 4262 Appointment Process for City Boards and Commissions. Item D: Ordinance Number 4613 and Resolution Number 4263 Budget Amendment and Approval of Behavioral Health Personnel Services Agreement with Awareness Consulting and Training LLC. And that's the last on the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Potem Maloney, seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say.
Mayor. If I may, I'd like to talk about Item C Charlie, which is the appointment to the boards and commissions. And I'd rather ask that it be moved for further discussion. Where I'm looking at is Section 2. It spans Pages 3 and 4. We have four specific items bulleted. So Section 2 starts off with the application packets of those meeting qualifications for the boards or commissions. And then we have four specific items, which are geographic representation, gender, ethnic, and familial and financial relationships. But I don't think we very well tie the actual qualifications for the positions into those bullet items. I had sent a message to the city manager of some proposed language. I don't believe that got circulated or did it. Uh, did not. So.
If I could just stop us real quick, just so we stay on track. Let's go ahead. It sounds like Councilman Serrano has requested that an item be moved to further along the agenda. So let's go ahead and put that somewhere further down and then we can fully discuss it later on in the agenda.
Sounds good.
Yeah, let's do.
Do we need to take a vote on whether or not everyone else wants it moved?
No, nope, not at all.
Yeah, if we can move it to either miscellaneous or late, what is it, 10 unfinished?
Yeah, that sounds great.
All right, well, that's the foundation for my question or concern.
Mr. Ferguson, do I need to amend my motion? It's been moved and seconded.
You do, yes.
So how should I proceed?
So the motion as originally presented included that item.
Correct.
At this point, it's been seconded.
So should I make a motion to remove Item C from the?
Technically, under our rules of order, it should be voted on at this point because it's been moved and seconded. So out of respect for your fellow council member, you could all vote to turn down the motion and then we can redo it. That's probably the best way.
Sure.
So Ms. Debbie, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Roach? Yes. Councilmember Serrano?
No.
Campos?
No.
Brown?
Let me be clear here. So what is the first step that we're taking again?
Sure, I can help you. So essentially, what happened was is that the Consent Agenda as presented was read through and a motion was made to adopt that consent agenda in whole. It was seconded, so technically, that motion is still on the floor and needs to be voted on before we move forward. At that time, Councilmember Serrano asked that we could remove one of those items. So the technical way to do that is to turn down or to vote down this motion and then remove that item and then resubmit a motion minus this item.
That said, they could reject my essential amendment as voting yes.
That's correct. So you can vote yes to approve the agenda as it was read or you can vote no, which would allow the request of Councilmember Serrano to be removed from the Consent Agenda.
Sounds like any further discussion, I'll say no.
Councilmember Milam?
No.
Councilmember Mayor Potem Maloney?
No.
Mayor Barajas?
No.
Okay, passed by six to one. Thank you. Failed, six to one. Thank you. Thank you, sorry.
Mayor Barajas, would I take a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to approve Items A, B, and D on the Consent Agenda.
And to move Item C to the miscellaneous?
And to move Item C to Section 10 of our Agenda Unfinished Business.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Moved by Mayor Potem Maloney, seconded by Councilman Campos. Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Milam?
Yes.
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Maloney?
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas?
Yes.
And it passed unanimously.
Thank you. So now that that's out of the way, we'll move on to Item 5 on our agenda, Proclamations and Acknowledgement. We do have an item on the agenda. Proclaiming Community Media Day. Accepting the proclamation is Mr. John Funfar, Communications Program Manager. Mr. Zabel, do you have any words tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I got caught a little bit off guard on this one. But annually, we have a Community Media Day, and that's a national recognition. So accepting that tonight, John Funfar, Communications Manager. And for those that don't know John, John does a great job of covering this meeting as well as other community meetings, candidate forums that are put on by legal women voters, things like that. And does our press release, our PIO communications with media and so forth. So no better person to accept that award on behalf of the city than John.
Thank you for that. Mr. Funfar, I do not have a hard copy to give you. However, I will read through the proclamation as I have it. "Community Media Day, October 20, 2022. Whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build common understanding and common values within a community. And access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community. And whereas community media organizations provide information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media and is important resource for participating in local democratic policy and processes. And whereas community media connects local government, schools, and community organizations to their constituents. In many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public education and government access channels. And whereas communities benefit from increased general awareness of and viewing audiences for media content created for the community. Now therefore, I, Blanche Barajas, Mayor for the City of Pasco, Washington, on behalf of our entire council, do hereby proclaim October 20, 22 as Community Media Day." So again, we will get you a hard copy.
Thank you.
And picture opportunities.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I'll have to find somebody else to take the pictures since I'm usually the one taking the pictures, so.
Do you have some words to share with us?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Yes, as you heard in the resolution, there's approximately 1,500, what they call PEG, Public Educational Government Access Channels throughout the country, increasing transparency for government, connecting community, and just hopefully making America a little bit better place to live. So on behalf of all those stations and on behalf of Pasco City Television, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Funfar. Some words from our Mayor Potem Maloney.
Well, Mr. Funfar, I mean, we've had the pleasure of going through a number of these things together, including you traveling at times to help share the awareness of City of Pasco and making sure we're connected with our community. Well, there's always more work to be done. The transparency is so essential. And I think, I wouldn't, I'm not sure I'd make a wager on it, but I'd suggest that you are probably the most award-winning person in the City of Pasco. I want to see your trophy case someday. I don't know if we need to get your second office for that or what. You know, always really, really appreciate it. And just how much recognition you receive from so many different organizations and so many for the hard work you do, I just really appreciate it. And just wanted to say my personal thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zabel, do you have more words to say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Item 6, Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the position of any questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Now, before I invite any of you and all of you to speak at the podium, I would like to remind you that we do have three minutes. We'll keep track of that. And if you have repeating messages, I would again advise you to minimize your comments so that way we give everyone opportunity to speak. So with that, who in this crowd would like to approach the podium first? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can everybody hear me okay? Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Robbie Mattis. This is my wife, Megan Mattis. We live at 7207 Cerulean Court in West Pasco. Our reason for being here is to discuss our recently purchased home at that address. We absolutely love Pasco. We love the community. My wife was born and raised, and she's from here. And we absolutely love the community that we live in. However, we were pretty disappointed to recently learn that the Development Department for the City of Pasco is going to be putting locking barriers on a paved easement in the rear of our household. When we purchased the home, we were told that we would have reasonable access to the rear of our home. And now with those locking posts supposedly going in, we won't have reasonable access to the rear of our home. So we wanted to make this known to the city council and we just wanted to bring this up for discussion so that we can come to a reasonable solution, hopefully. And other than that, just thank you guys for your time and appreciate you having us.
Thank you both for coming to bring that. So we'll make note of your address. And if you have any pictures that you'd like to share with the clerk, that you can share with us as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to come to the podium? Go ahead, ma'am. And then you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am a Pasco resident, Karen Milam. And I am here to talk about or give my opinion of the marijuana shop that you are looking to put into. As a clerk of the board for the Franklin County Commissioners, I am down to this city every day. And I walk for seven years. I walk around the blocks and I walk downtown and I do shopping downtown because these people mean something to me. And then I see schoolchildren in the morning walking to school. And I am personally, not for marijuana, but I am strongly adamant against where you are trying to put it in. Because of these children and these shops, these people do not have the means to move out of the situation and leave if they need to to protect their children. Would you want your children there? I doubt that you would. To make a compromise, have it in a place, King City. You have lots of traffic there. You have lots of open space. You don't have children with school zones. You don't have people. You've put so much time and effort and money into cleaning up downtown and it's beautiful. And now you're going to shoot yourself in the foot by putting this type of shop in around residential homes, hoping that you're going to have somebody come into the shops. I promise you, there isn't going to be very many people coming into a venue. They're going to be shopping at that once place and that's it. And the people that are going to be coming to there are not going to be of benefit to our city. And as a mom, my most concern is those children. So I urge you to think about that, what you are doing to the downtown city people. These people have worked so hard and have come so far. And then you want to ruin it and destroy it after all that you've built up? I hope you consider it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, my name's Jim Raymond. I've been a resident of Pasco since 1978, raised my kids here, participated in the development of this community when it was at its lowest point as a police officer. I've watched men's blood run down the curb lines of downtown Pasco. I've watched men killed over a kilo of cocaine. While I was working in the task force, I bought 200-plus pounds of marijuana just across the street, no more than about 150 feet out of these council chambers. I've watched men do some pretty terrible things. I also watched a council some several decades ago that stood up and said, "No more." And that council took their community back, took their city back, and Pasco became the pride of the Tri-Cities. And it's no longer the redheaded stepchild, if you will, of the Tri-Cities. I've watched businessmen in downtown Pasco work hard to change the whole dynamics of that downtown from bars, dope dealers on the corners, all kinds of things over the years. I've watched my tax dollars and your tax dollars being spent to tear down a motel to make a parking lot out of it so that you can get rid of the crime that's occurring in downtown Pasco so you can reinvent it down there. You're just that far from reinventing that downtown Pasco. And then all of a sudden, someone's thinking about putting a marijuana shop down there? People can get their dope from all kinds of different places. And the drug cartel loves people like some of you council members that let that occur and let people come in and sell marijuana in your thriving business in downtown. I would suggest you strongly consider what you're about to do and keep your moratoriums in place for marijuana. Trafficking is what it is. Legalized marijuana trafficking out of my community and your community. Let it go to some other community. You need to concentrate on the climbing crime rates that are occurring in your city right now? The climbing homicide rates that are occurring and all the other things. And take your community back and quit letting other people come in and destroy it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Scott Musser. I'm a city resident at 3313 Road 92 in Pasco. I'm a business owner and I'm an employer in the City of Pasco. Four years ago, I located our small business in Pasco. One of the defining reasons for that was thankfully the leaders of Franklin County and the leaders of the then-city of Pasco had the fortitude to ban and eliminate the sales of marijuana in Franklin County and the City of Pasco. I'm here to speak strongly against the City of Pasco considering allowing marijuana sales within the boundaries of the city. Ironically, I walk in tonight and I see a poster at the back of the room that says, "Proudly proclaim City of Pasco, number-one national mid-sized rising housing market, most popular mid-sized cities to relocate, best places for homeownership, safest cities in Washington, Washington State City on the rise, and all-American city finalist." I don't see unferrited and free access to marijuana on that list. And if you add it to that list, I'm sure you can discount and remove some of those statements on the City of Pasco. I strongly urge you to not allow marijuana sales within the confines of the City of Pasco. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Name's John Rosenau, 5509 Fayette Lane here in Pasco. I'm here as a citizen. I'm also your county assessor, elected position. But I'm here as a private citizen and a former police officer from this city. So once a month, a group of us old gray hairs that served this city get together. A bunch of retired, some of us didn't put in that much time. We have donuts and coffee. And there was a dozen of us Saturday met for coffee. And I asked them if they would read something and consider signing it. And without exception, 12 present, 12 sign. And I'd like to read that to the council. "We, the below-signed individuals, all having served with distinction and honor as police officers for the City of Pasco, wish to express our opposition to the placement of a cannabis shop in the City of Pasco. With a combined experience of hundreds of years and all having firsthand experience of the effects of dealing with individuals using various drugs, to include cannabis, i.e. marijuana, we ask the city council to vote no on allowing such a business to operate in the City of Pasco." Got a copy of one of these for every one of the council members?
If you want to give it to the clerk, please.
There was only 12 people present for the signing of that, but there wasn't a hesitation by one of them. And I want to reemphasize, hundreds of years of experience. And I didn't put in the years here that our sheriff did, but I worked special investigation undercover stuff in downtown here back in the early 80s, started in law enforcement in the 70s. And believe me, we don't want to see happen here what we were cleaning up back then. And folks, you're getting ready to head that direction. Don't do it, please. Now, as an assessor, I can tell you it's going to impact your values. It may raise the values of downtown. If lots of businesses sell higher, that's going to raise the taxes on those businesses. If it diminishes the values downtown, it's because they've hurt the businesses. But it is going to have an impact, one way or the other. And I would ask you to not serve the almighty dollar. Serve the citizens. Thank you.
Good evening. Curtis McGary, 7008 Alderman, Franklin County Coroner. I came tonight to just to encourage you to really think of this moment, the thing that you're going to make a decision of. For years that we lived in Kennewick, my family lived in Kennewick, and we watched Pasco grow. We watched Pasco become the star child of the three cities. We moved back to Pasco because we could see Kennewick going downhill. Today, you almost always hear about Benton County and the crime. You don't hear so much about Pasco and crime. At my work, most of our overdoses all have THC in them. When the toxicology comes back, we have THC in them. We're seeing it in younger youth in our Pasco, in our high schools. So we don't need to make it easier to get. It's legal, yes. But do we need to encourage it by bringing that back in? As Mr. Musser mentioned, Pasco's a great place. Look at all the accolades you've got. Let's not put a dark star on that by bringing or lifting the moratorium for this back in. I don't want to see more overdoses. One or two, when I have to go and tell a parent that their son or daughter is overdosed, and they said, "But all they've ever been doing was marijuana." That's all. I know they've been marijuana, that's all. Marijuana's the stepping stone. So let's not bring that. If you do okay it, be very considerate of where you place it at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, my name's Luke Mullabacher. I'm the PCO 54 for Pasco, Franklin County right now. I'm here to say, no, don't do it. Please don't. My kids don't need that in their lives. I already have challenges with kids doing this. I have sisters and brothers that have struggled starting with marijuana 20 years ago. They're now mentally messed up. Don't bring this into our city. Number two, marijuana is federally illegal. That will ruin job opportunities and career options for children that are going into the workforce in the future if they get that in their hands. If you're a union worker, it's federally illegal. You're federally certified. If you are a CDL operator, you're federally licensed. That's illegal for you. If you are a drone pilot, you have your FAA license. That is federally illegal for you. That is a federal license. Number three or five, actually, we'll go on more, your gun rights. Number two amendment, your gun rights. If you say you don't do drugs when you fill out that application for your background check, that's a federal background check. You are now a felon because you said no because it's legal in your state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Barajas and councilmembers. My name is Steve Simmons and I'm a resident of Pasco. And I'm also a school board member here in Pasco as well. And I just wanted to get up and voice my opposition to having any type of marijuana facility here in the city, especially downtown, for selling or anything otherwise. This last week, I was able to tour one of our East Pasco schools and witness our dual-language program in working. And what was so impressive to me and also be able to tour our high school as well was to see these children and see these kids hard at work and the bright futures that they have and the willingness they have to work hard and to learn. And I just could not sit on that board knowing that I had supported something that could possibly take that opportunity or any opportunity they have away from them and any of their bright futures away from them due to something that could be considered quite addictive and could remove a choice of theirs in life to have control of their lives. And so I just wanted to stand before you and voice my opposition and say thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Brahas, council member Steve Christensen, forty-three ten Sahara Drive here in Pasco. I also am a school board member, so I I know somewhat what you're feeling up there. Um, I want to thank you for your service. I appreciate the things that you do for our city. We have a great city here. Um, first of all, let me just ask that, so I know in the school district as board members, we have a link on our website where we can, where people can go and and send one email that goes to all board members. I was trying to send an email to you guys today. I noticed you don't have email first. And second, I have to email each of you individually. So I would ask that you look at that, that to create a way that we can contact all board members with a single letter. Um, I'm here tonight again opposed to the uh, to the cannabis or lifting the cannabis moratorium. Uh, sorry I missed the listening sessions. I'm sure there are many people who would like to weigh in on this, who are not here tonight, who you're not going to hear from. But I I can assure you, there are many people in Pasco who are opposed to this. Um, so please continue the moratorium. Nothing good can come from lifting that moratorium. Uh, we need to make it more difficult, not easier for people to get access to marijuana. They can get it if they want it. They may have to travel across the river. But as one of the uh, one of my friends said tonight, we're not getting Costco here, it doesn't appear. We've got to go across the river to get to Costco. So we're, we're not asking too much from them. My guess is that those who are in favor of lifting this moratorium are those who stand to profit from it. It's not worth it. The cost in the long run will be far more than any profits that the city could gain from this through tax revenue. So again, I'm here tonight to ask you to continue the moratorium. Thank you.
Good evening, um, council members and also community. My name is Walupi Cardenas. I'm living north of Pasco. Um, I talked to some of my neighbors and um, what I, I'm living north of Pasco. So when I talk to my neighbors, whatever happens in Pasco is, will affect us also. So um, you heard some comments already, I tried to minimize some of those. The extra money that we'll bring in does not offset the problems that it can cause the families and community. So be aware, I guess, that ten to twenty years from now, long on later on. Uh, I do have the belief that in order to keep law and order, Pasco, Pasco, this story in Pasco is not a good fit. Our police officers and sheriffs are stretched already, do not need the extra, extra work. That's what I'm thinking, long term, not good for the community. I said like ten to twenty years to that. So we look at it, what happened before. Again, it also tell you from Kennewick, Vancouver and Fifth, I used to live there a long time ago and it's a mess now. That's what I've been hearing. So I don't want Pasco to get there. Pasco has cleared up. My recommendation is to say no, no, vote, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joe Cada, live at nine one zero six Durham Court in Pasco. I'm usually a lot more prepared for these things, but it's harvest. So I don't know if you see too many grape groves around here. Um, but uh, I didn't think I was going to be here tonight. I was just able to get a break and get away. And so here I am. But I, I um, I think maybe all of us, I've heard some things maybe a lot more profound than the anecdotal thing I'm going to say tonight, but that's really it. We've all seen people mess up their lives radically through marijuana use. And I understand there are all kinds of studies that talk about how healthy it is and and the medical benefits it can provide. We can do a lot better than marijuana with helping people. And I just don't think we're prepared to see more people ruin their lives with this kind of um, access that we don't need to give them. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikki Morgan. I live at forty-five sixteen Crescent Road, new Pasco resident, but grew up in the Tri-Cities. I am also asking you to please not lift the moratorium on this, this idea of legalizing cannabis and a cannabis shop in Pasco. This is a morality issue. So I'm really hoping that your minds aren't already made up. I'm hoping that you're hearing the citizens and our plea to you to not invite this into our children's lives. It doesn't need a special invitation into my kids' lives or yours. It doesn't need a special invitation into their schools or anywhere else. Please hear us. We are not the only residents that feel this way. There are hundreds more at home who can't be here tonight. Listen to your constituents.
Is there anyone else that wishes to make a statement? However, give me just a second. I've got eleven people and I hear the message. Everyone that's already spoke said no. Is there a different message from the community that's here that wishes to speak and be on the record?
Afternoon, council members. Uh, my name's Walter Griffiths. I live at ninety-six eleven uh, Ballflower Drive, Pasco, Washington. I'm here to discuss, and I agree with everybody here as well. I disagree with that myself. But I'm also here to discuss another issue we have is a serious traffic problem in my neighborhood. We have excessive speeders every day. We have neighbors complaining every day in my neighborhood. I have the Pasco app. I send you guys daily. And all I get is call this traffic number. I called the traffic number. All I get is, we'll try to send somebody out. But nothing has been resolved. I've been there for three years and the traffic is just getting worse. And it's like, I, if we don't get a hundred cars through our neighborhood a day, we don't get any. And they're not just cars, there are rigs, there's uh, uh, general contractors pulling trailers. Uh, our speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour in our neighborhood, which I think is way too fast. You got, when you have cars parked in our neighborhood on either side of the highway, you don't have room to get one rig through there, much less two cars. We've had three or four cars hit in our neighborhood, not besides not even being robbed. I've been robbed twice. I had a car stolen. I've had my catalytic converter cut off from underneath my car. Uh, the last time a car got stolen, the cops didn't show up. They did everything over the phone. I mean, do we have a, a police issue problem? And do we, do we not have enough police officers to patrol our area? I mean, if, if we don't have enough police officers, we need to do something to control this traffic. Either slowing speed humps down, cameras, I mean, if you don't hit these people in the pocket and write them tickets, they're not going to slow down. I've, I don't know how many people I've followed home, you know, and threatened them, you know? I mean, sorry, it's, I've, I've done it. And it's, and it's going to keep happening until these people slow down. I mean, I'm, next thing I might do, I don't know if I'm going to start throwing rocks at their, through their window of their car. I don't know, but something needs to be done because this is getting out of control. I mean, I've been there, like I said, I've been there three years. I complain weekly and and nothing's ever been done. I, I don't even see, uh, uh, like I said, I talk to the cops all the time. And they're like, Mr. Griffiths, we're sorry, we're, we're just busy, we're doing something else. Uh, you know, I mean, something needs to be done. You know, and I, I'd like to know what the city's going to do about it. You know, before, let's be proactive, not reactive. You got forty hous- you got twenty houses now you're building at the end of our neighborhood. That's forty more cars coming down the road, easily forty more cars. And like I said, it was twenty-five miles an hour. Twenty-five mile an hour is going to get you thirty, thirty-five easy. Don't tell me twenty-five is going to get you twenty-five, because it's not. I see it all day long. I watch, drive through my neighborhood. It's like, it's like the Daytona five hundred when they come around ninety-six and they turn on Ballflower Dr- Drive.
I'll invite you to wrap up your comments, please.
I'm sorry?
I'll invite you to wrap up your comments.
Okay, well, anyway, it's like the NASCAR, it's like Daytona five hundred, restart, okay? When they come around ninety-six from my neighborhood and they go down Ballflower Lane, it's like they're going as fast as they can go. And I, y'all, I think y'all just fortunate enough, nobody's been killed in that neighborhood. So I think we need to, I really think y'all need to really look into that. You're more than welcome to park in my driveway, look at traffic all day long, coming through.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Mullenbacher. I've lived in Pasco for, gosh, twenty years. I've raised my five children here. And I am sorry if you are tired of hearing that the Pasco residents do not want to have a pot shop in their city. I have watched my son deteriorate from starting with marijuana at McLaughlin Middle School to have an addiction to methamphetamine and heroin. Not only is it dangerous for that individual, it's dangerous for the community. And he became a danger to the community despite how he was raised. It's taken us six years to fight for him. Google it. Marijuana causes aggression, anger, all kinds of issues. You can simply Google search it. Is that worth your one percent of profit gained? Having dangerous people out on the streets? It's heartbreaking to watch your child go through that. We have fought so hard to get this city better, to get our kids better. But they can still access this crap in middle school, high school, and it goes way beyond that. It gets worse. I have almost had to bury my son. This isn't just an inconvenience for you to have to sit up here and listen to these citizens. We care. We want to see our children live. Stand up and do your jobs. Protect this city. It's not about your dollar coming in. How many dollars have we spent to make the city better? But we're just going to throw it away? Do the right thing.
So I just want to add quick comment. Uh, my comment about um, switching the, the comments because we've received enough information. I'm not, it's not that I'm trying to shut anyone from making their comments. We're trying to move this meeting along. We have several other subjects on our agenda. Again, I do feel for you. I, I understand what you're saying. But we want to give everyone else an opportunity to speak. Ma'am, I'm sorry you're going through that situation. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Carl. I live at forty-six zero three Choya Court in Pasco. And I want to thank all you members of the city council for your, all your hard work for the city and and for listening to us, to be willing to listen to us. My experience around the use of marijuana has informed me that the use of this drug dulls the senses and makes the user impulsive. It ha- it hinders child mental development. And in post COVID, that's the last thing we need. And uh, with all the other problems that, that our youth are facing, particularly in this day and age, when people are impaired, there is grave social cost in terms of crime, accidents, violence, and social disintegration. The economic cost of social disintegration resulting from having this pot shop will far outweigh any gains. Uh, costs will be such as incarceration, crime, emergency, traffic, just for a few examples. You can put a pri- you can't put a price on the human cost. We mustn't sell out our citizens. Economic game for pot is a farce. Please continue the moratorium. And I thank you again.
Hi, my name is Lali Martinez. I live on Bellflower and Prairie Lane. I want a second uh, about the traffic issue that we have in our neighborhood. I've reached out to multiple people about the problems that we've had. When the Carley addition was brought in, I myself went around and picked up multiple around uh, amounts of petitions. I want to say around seventy, if my memory serves me correctly, might fail me. Every person that signed that petitions, their number one objective was the speed of traffic. The amount of traffic. I drive the Tri-Cities, sometimes three times a day. I'll tell you some routes. Road one hundred, Welch, right off of Chapel Hill. They'll come off Welch, go down one hundred, go down Bellflower, cut down ninety-six. They'll come up Court, go across Argent, come up ninety-six to cut across Bellflower. You can count ten cars there. Eight don't live there. You could sit there and people just try out their freshly tuned car going down that road. We need help. We need, it's impossible to have a police officer sitting there all the time. We know this. Pasco app, no avail. Different police officers, we know that they're stretched thin. We need help. On another subject, I too oppose the cannabis. I am a native of this town. And the stigma that would come with this is no good. And I would like to quote one of my history professors that said, the decisions that we make today dictate the people that we become tomorrow. Thank you.
Madam Chairman and members of the council, my name is Fred Nemo. I vote in precinct thirteen. I'd like to add my word, no.
Any further comment from the chambers? Seeing no further comment, thank you again, everyone that spoke. And um, in the issues regarding policing and traffic, we'll discuss that with our police department and have a solution for you. Um, on the other um, issue, everything that you've said has been noted. Thank you again.
I simply want to note that this week I've had an unusual amount of email traffic and I don't, I guess, I thought they could email all of us, but it's, looks like it's going to be individual. I've received almost twenty emails about the cannabis, um, seventeen against two, four. Uh, usually I see two or three, maybe six. Um, so again, I think our, our our listening sessions were effective, that it got the word out that we're exploring this issue and then having decided to move forward with it. Um, it sounds like folks are getting more and more vocal. So I just wanted to call that a note because usually I don't get twenty emails on a subject.
Thank you for that. Um, I think we've all received similar emails throughout the weekend, um, since the listening sessions. So thank you again. Um, thank you again for being involved in the community and and expressing your, your ideas. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, item eight, hearings and council action on ordinances. Oh, that's right. I am so sorry. I'm stepping back uh, to item number seven on the agenda. Verbo- verbal reports from council members. If any of the council members have attended any meetings or functions throughout the last week, if you'd like to share anything with the uh, council. Um, Councilwoman Roach.
Just wanted to update um, the council that Visit Tri-Cities has made their selection for the new CEO. Um, his name is Kevin Lewis. Um, he comes from Saint George, Utah. So in the uh, county vicinity that Zion National Park resides in, um, do I need to? Not hearing very well? Okay, there we go. So um, his experience is primarily in recreation and the outdoors. Um, so I'm looking forward personally. I don't know how the other board members are feeling, but I feel that you know, if they selected him, he brings something that uh, that is new in terms of experience in really promoting the outdoors and recreation. And so it's something I look forward to within tourism for Visit Tri-Cities.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Councilman Campos.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a Ben Franklin Transit Board of Directors meeting last Thursday and um, it went fairly well. Um, Chairman Kate has a great job of, of chairing those meetings. We discussed electric buses as a kind of a move ahead and green effort. Uh, the board is a little, I want to say, we're trying to explore and get data back. And so we decided to be conservative with our approach to procuring new buses. There's federal grant money that's available to us to purchase, I think, up to six buses, but the infrastructure isn't there yet. So we thought it would be better to kind of scale back and just go to electric buses as like a pilot program in conjunction with, you know, we're looking at smaller buses as another pilot program to kind of um, help with our perception of empty buses running around all over the town. You know, I've, I've ridden the bus now as, as an experiment to see firsthand just what numbers are there. And I can say that that's not true in a lot of cases, but I understand the perception because I do see it on my, my own too. So um, that's just something we're exploring. We're looking forward to seeing that. We don't anticipate electric buses being up and running until probably sometime next year or even the year after because of um, procurement and stuff like that. But um, it should be exciting. Um, outside of that, not a lot happened at the BFT. We just had good, good engaging discussion between all of us.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anything else to share from council? Okay, so before I move on to our next item, we'll take a five minute break to return at seven fifty-five. So before I move on to our next item, we'll take a five-minute break to return at seven fifty-five. And this meeting is now back in session. Thank you again. So we'll move on with item eight, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there too. Item A, public hearing and ordinance, number forty-six fourteen, ad valorem tax property, property tax. And we have Director, uh, Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I returned to you after, uh, you'll recall last week we met and looked over the general fund revenues and the options for the ad valorem or property tax for this next year. That I have a couple of small slides. They, uh, this one is hard to even tell. Well, if you recall, we talked about that, that there were different options. We can take no change in the levy amount and stay, just bank the one percent. And the highest we can raise the taxes is one percent. Or the implicit price deflator percentage, which this year is a little over six. But one percent therefore is the limit. Or, or we can bank it. Uh, we also have the option that was brought up last week of we could recapture what we've previously banked and take the one percent all at the same time. So the first slide that has, you can see there at the bottom, uh, which is twenty-twenty, you know, coming to twenty-twenty-three, the very small difference between our three options. It's, it's very small. And then the next slide, please, has the calculation of options A, B, and C. Option A is taking, not increasing the property tax at all and just banking it for, to be collected at a different time when we deem it appropriate and needed. Uh, option B is just taking the one percent. And then option C is collecting our banked act to our capacity plus the one percent. All three options, uh, end up being lower property taxes for the coming year than they were this year, thanks to our SS value increasing so much. Um, and so I bring this back to you if you have time to consider and decide what you'd like to do. We do have, um, you'll note in the staff, uh, report that, that we noted some items that we could use the, uh, increased property tax with the, either the one percent or the higher banking plus one percent towards debt service for some projects that are planned in this coming biennium. Um, they are the, the fire station eighty-five. And, uh, the, the annual debt service on that is about five hundred, would be about five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, with the bank capacity one percent, we would, um, collect another four hundred and five thousand dollars approximately. Um, and then the other two options are the, um, the land purchase for a community center. And then also, uh, uh, police headquarters building. And so all those are just things to consider and, uh, for you to determine what you'd like to do for this coming year. So I'll just open it up for questions or...
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mayor Potemalani.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you Director Buckley for, for pulling up the additional information. I spent quite a bit of time thinking about this and just trying to figure out, um, you know, in, in partial response to, uh, Councilmember Milon's, um, comments, um, last week when we were discussing this, um, I thought about what is, what is, what is the safest route we can go, right? And what I kept coming back to is, right now, we're in a very healthy state in terms of sales tax. We're healthy in terms of increase from construction. We have a lot of things that we want. But when I'm looking at, for example, that list of items there, we, we still have some time to, to figure that out. With the way the economy is currently going in terms of interest rates and, and how that is, is on balance, I guess I feel like the most effective thing we could do would be to not increase, to bank the capacity and to live within that set of means for now. And then evaluate this again next year, of course, and consider whether or not, if we need to use those sources to, um, for example, recover from, if we had an economic downturn and we were looking at potentially, we've, we've got enough, um, money in the bank right now to be able to carry us through some troubled times. But we could use this to recover from whatever we need to recover from. But we can't do that if we use this and then plan on having that in place. So where am I in absence of seeing something more, um, immediately pressing in terms of our priorities? Um, I would, I'm, I'm, I will support, um, banking the capacity, not increasing us, our property taxes at this time and, um, considering it again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Serrano.
Yeah, I'll echo that a hundred percent and especially two words, immediately pressing. I see nothing on this list that is that. And I guess the one question I would offer is, in the event that we do see the potentially projected economic downturn, if we were to need to hit something in six months, nine months, less than a year, could we have, uh, this similar hearing in less than a year? Is there a statutory minimum? Uh, as far as when we can revisit this issue if, you know, knock on wood, and hopefully it doesn't happen, but we see something crazy happen first of the year and we need the money for something, or do we have to wait a full year?
It's my understanding that we have to wait a full year. I think you can only do one percent is the maximum per year.
Yeah, it has to be known to the auditor by, by November thirtieth at the latest so they can calculate that into the next year's tax, property tax.
Okay. I appreciate that. I, I still think, I, I agree with what Councilman Maloney said, or Mayor Potem said. I, I think it's the wise steward of the money is to withhold taking anything right now.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from council members? I don't see any further comments from council members. Mayor Potemalani, would you like to read a motion?
Yes, and I just want to be very excruciatingly clear because I know we had a couple typos in the, in the original draft. I want to just make sure that, that, um, option A would be not taking any increase and would be banking the ca- capacity, preserving the capacity for our potential future. Okay, then I intend to make motion A. I move to adopt ordinance number four, six, one, four, providing for an increase in the regular, uh, property taxes of the city for, for, for levy in twenty-twenty-two and collection.
I'm sorry. I think we, we think we got a little ahead of ourselves. We actually need to have a public hearing on this.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I, I, thanks to the city manager for...
I withdraw any half motion that I almost made.
Thank you for that, and I apologize. I think we were mo- trying to move through this, uh, quick. Uh, we do have a public hearing, um, for this item here. With the comments from our, uh, finance director and comments from council, is there any further comment before I open this hearing? This hearing is now open in regards to, um, the ordinance number forty-six fourteen, ad valorem tax. Is there any comment from the chambers regarding this, um, item? Second ca- second call from comment from the chambers on this item. Third and final call for comments on this item. So if you want to put the, turn the microphone on.
Okay, that's great.
State your name and address for record again, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Juan P. Cordinas at twenty-six sixty Frontier Road in Pasco. I'm not sure, uh, I guess I wasn't aware of this one. But my, uh, since you're asking for comments, my comment will be go to, for the first A, which is no. Keep it the way you have it. Do not spend the money. Um, I'm sure she's saying that we can increase more money, but I, I see the way the economy is going, people have a paycheck, and you increase a few dollars, the tax revenues is going up, houses value have gone up, my taxes have gone up. So I, I know I'm actually one for much, so people, you already increases, so we don't need to do any more, uh, to additional to the people of the Pasco or the county, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Hearing not for the comment from chambers. This hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion?
I'm gonna look at the, the attorney first to make sure I get a head nod so I don't screw this up again. Are we good?
We are good.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. I move to adopt ordinance number four, six, one, four, providing for an increase in the, in the regular property taxes of the city for levy in twenty-twenty-two and collection in twenty-twenty-three tax year, preserving the levy capacity for future years and providing for related matters. And this is a zero percent increase from the previous year, twenty-twenty-two.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Potemalani, seconded by Councilman, uh, Serrano. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Then it passes unanimously. We have some comments from Mr. Ferguson? No comments from Mr. Ferguson. We will move on to our next item on the agenda, number nine. Ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We do have ordinance number forty-six fifteen, Road Forty LLC rezone L, L one to L two, or I one to I two. And Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council. This rezone involves approximately seventy acres. It's, it's located, uh, just west of Road Forty East and, uh, north of the, uh, Big Pasco Heavy Industrial, uh, Center. The current zoning is I one. The request is to change it to I two, the next most intense industrial zoning district. It's anticipated that the buyers, uh, are, well, the buyers are actually well down the road, uh, in order to establish a major industrial park on the site. The hearing examiner conducted a public hearing in September and has forwarded a recommendation of approval for council's consideration.
Thank you for that. Any comments from council regarding this item? Mayor Potemalani.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, I, I just wanted to let council know that I, I did send over some questions and, um, highlighted some potential concerns from the packet to, um, Director White. Uh, my understanding and Director White, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase this in the way, that's the way I can, and I'll, I, I, I know you'll correct me and, uh, clarify if necessary. What I think I understood is that the concerns around traffic are going to be medi- will be considered through a traffic, um, impact analysis. That'll be done as part of the actual project permitting, not at this phase in terms of zoning. Um, that's consistent with all rezones. And that there's additional, I'm, I'm, I am very concerned about the impact to the community directly to the east. That when we, that I two specifically has, um, is, is in essence listed as an incompatible use to most zones. There are fumes, lights, um, sounds above and beyond just normal light industrial. Um, and, but those things also would be considered during, um, the permit, the project permitting process and mitigated or mitigations would be required at that stage. Director White, did I get that correct, that the zoning is not?
It, no, that's, that's correct. And in addition to, uh, the State Environmental Policy Act, uh, we also, um, have our own regulations in our existing municipal code for mitigation of, uh, light and noise in particular.
We have some comments from Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I need to run you through your script real quick. I'm sorry. I, uh, I should have grabbed that before you jumped on there, uh, Deputy Mayor. So just a reminder, this is a quasi, uh, quasi judicial hearing. Uh, it is a hearing to render a final decision on the materials that are presented to you in the packet. Uh, it is defined as a proceeding which council defines the legal rights and duties and privileges of the specific parties. Um, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies, uh, which requires, uh, it must be fair in three respects, both form or form substance as well as appearance. Uh, all council members should consider any potential conflicts they have as follows. A demonstrated bias for or against the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding, which would affect them personally. Whether there would be, uh, any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, the facts. Whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And finally, any other conflict that council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. So with that being said, is there any disclosures that council members feel like they need to make at this time? Seeing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
And thank you for that. I, I got a little bit ahead of myself again. Um, apparently that's a theme for tonight. So Director White, did I, so, um, so just to, just to get back, back on track, the idea is that those things are all considered during the permitting process once a, um, final, like, what's a preliminary, here's what they actually want to do, and then the city can consider, um, what's going to be necessary to mitigate any sort of impact to, for example, the residential neighborhood.
That, that's correct. And, um, the proper time for that to occur is when more detailed plans are known, uh, by the applicant on their, uh, actual project proposal as opposed to the rezone. Although they are doing, as we, as I mentioned, they are doing the traffic impact analysis now to get that essentially on the record.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, um, how would I be able to keep abreast of this, Director White? Um, again, I'm, I'm concerned about the impact as it goes through this. And I believe it goes to, stays in the staff level from here on out. I'm not asking for any sort of approval authority or anything like that. That's, um, what, if, assuming that we make, go, go forward tonight with the recommendation of the hearing examiner and approve this, where, where in the permitting process would I understand? Because I'm, I'm very concerned about the community. They're, they're not a community of folks who are going to be here at this meeting, um, in general. So, um, I would hate, I would hate to make their quality of life, um, pretty bad, especially, um, when we know that there's a, a special permit for preschool also at the end of the street there next to, next to that area and what those potential impacts are going to be.
Uh, that's a good question. I'm gonna have to put my nose to the grindstone a bit and s- figure out a way to keep you in the loop. Um, there, there's some ways I can think of, but I, I want to explore that a little more closely before I forward those on.
And is that true for community members as well? If they had concerns, would there be any mechanism through the permitting process?
Actually, I think there is. And, uh, we have a website that you can access that will, uh, that provides notification for the SEPA process. I think that's our best and quickest, uh, uh, avenue for notification.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I, I, and some of the clarification, the questions I'm asking right here are applicable to all these rezones. We have a lot of rezones where people from the community are saying, I'm worried about this impact to traffic. As a, for instance, we know that zoning isn't the right spot for it, so making sure that we understand and the community understands when the right spot is. If I'm confused, I, I guarantee you just about every member of the community that cares is also confused. And so this will be a recurring theme, I think, has been in the past and certainly will continue to be at this point. Uh, that's all the questions I had. Thank you, Director White.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Roach.
I just wanted to add to this conversation amongst council that I share the same concerns as you, Mayor Potemalani. I think of the example of just off of Harris Road, uh, with USA Rock and the, you know, you're talking about completely, uh, different stratified people, um, geographically, income-wise. And yet they decided to build homes where they knew that there was industrial use. And it has brought nothing but nuisance. And can, you know, there are still those complaints, even though they were well aware of what existed across the street. Um, so I'm not particularly in favor of doing this to those individual residents, to that area. And, yeah, I guess I would, I would urge my fellow council members to consider that.
Thank you. Any further comments from council?
And I would just like to, to clarify that I'm not opposing the rezone. But I do think that the, during the permitting process, I'd very much like to understand better. Either this is a case study or one of the other actions where we understand better how the, how we, how we track and how the community gives input to permitting. Thank you.
Any further comments, Councilman Serrano?
For Director White, wouldn't the, uh, three-hundred-foot mailing, uh, radius likely impact these people as a project or as a potential project moves forward?
Uh, actually it would not. The rezone, of course, is subject to the public notification. Um, and, and even with the existing zoning, the, the project would move forward administratively from here on out.
I think both those things will put me on the, uh, not for this rezone.
Okay. Any further comment from council? With no further comment from council on this, uh, matter, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number four, six, one, five, approving a rezone for a property on the west side of Road Forty East, south of A Street from I one Light Industrial to I two Medium Industrial and further author, authorized publication by summary only.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh- Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
There's three nays. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Milm?
No.
Roach?
No.
Serrano?
Yes.
Campus? Campos?
No.
Brown?
No.
And Maloney?
Yes.
Barajas?
No.
So that is, boy, I got mixed up here. So that's two yes, five no. So it did not pass.
Thank you for that.
Director White, in the past, we've had a clarification, and Mr. Ferguson, maybe your lights on for?
Sure, yeah, so essentially, with the Council's role at this point is is to decide whether they would like to move forward with accepting the recommendation, so there was a motion to accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner and approve the rezon. Your other option is to decline to go to take the recommendation and then request a closed record hearing, which is what the process would need to move forward to now. We'll have to comply with some notice requirements per our code, but at this time, since the Council refused to go forward with the recommendation of the hearing examiner, it would go on for further review and will come back to you as a closed record hearing. Is that correct, Mr. White?
Councilwoman Serrano?
One, with it being a closed record hearing, that prohibits any further communication either within this body or outside. And so if we receive any emails in reference to this, we ought to what, forward it to you and the city manager, how how ought we comply with that?
Well, yes and no, so yes, the answer to your first question is yes, it will be a closed record hearing still be bound by the appearance of fairness and the quasi judicial process. So Council will need to be careful about what kind of contacts they have, any ex parte contacts. Now, the the example that you just mentioned is not actually by statute a an ex parte contact because it's in writing and can be put on the record as made part of the record of the hearing that that this board will hold or this this Council will hold. But to answer your first question, the record that was heard or was created at the open record hearing in front of the hearing examiner will be the only thing that comes back before you for further examination. So the Council at that point can can examine that through the closed record process. Would they set the date for the hearing?
Uh, yeah, and if the if Council wants to conduct the closed record hearing, a motion that would set the date for either November twenty-first or a special meeting on November twenty-eighth would certainly be appreciated. We we have to prepare the record that was before the hearing examiner for Council's examination. That's why the lag between now and the suggested dates of eleven twenty-one or eleven twenty-eight.
In that case, we need to move forward with a motion for a date, correct?
So, and that would be to to hold a close record hearing on this property for November twenty-eighth would be a reasonable date?
Or twenty-first, the regular council meeting.
Right, understood, it's week of Thanksgiving and that's a spotty week for a number of people, so I might recommend that we look at November twenty-eighth. So I will, I'll make a, so I move to hold a closed record hearing on the rezon of the property on the west side, the side of Road Forty East, south of A Street from I-one to I-two on on November twenty-eighth. Is that satisfactory, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campos, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And we have a date of November twenty-eighth. Thank you. With that, we move on to our next item, again, a quasi judicial item, ordinance number forty-six sixteen, Ramgarh Commons rezon office to C-one and R-one. And again, Director White?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council, this rezon request is for a site that's just under three acres in size. It's located at the northeast corner of Road Forty-two and and Court Street. The existing zoning is office and the request is to rezon the parcel to C-one and R-one, the C-one on the southern half of the parcel, which would align with our comprehensive plan, land use designations. The hearing examiner also conducted a public hearing on this proposal in September and has forwarded a recommendation of approval for Council consideration.
Thank you, are there any comments from Council regarding this item?
Madam Mayor, just real quick, just wanna give folks a chance to make any disclosures with regard to the same biases that were mentioned earlier. Any disclosures now would be the time for those. Hearing none, and any members of the audience wishing to disqualify a member of Council? Seeing none, we're prepared.
Thank you again. Any comments from Council regarding this item, any questions to Mr. White or staff? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas, I move to adopt ordinance number four six one six, approving a rezon for the for a property located at the northeast corner of Road Forty-two and West Court Street from Office to C-one and R-one, and further authorize publication by summary only.
And I'll second that. Thank you, moved by Mayor Potemaloni, seconded by Councilwoman Roach, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item, another quasi judicial item, item ordinance number forty-six seventeen, Magnolia Heights rezon office and C-one to R-three. And again, Mr. Ferguson?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, so just another quasi judicial matter, so those same requirements or the same potential conflicts exist, the demonstrated bias, any indirect or direct financial interest, any prejudgment of the issues, ex parte contact or internal contact or, excuse me, conflict where the Council member believes would prevent them from hearing the the matter. Any disclosures now? Hearing none, I do want to place on the record, we have received a couple of written correspondence and under the statute, the Council is allowed to have those directly towards them, directed towards them as long as those are then placed subsequently on the record, so I've I've got true and correct copies of those that the Council received and I will submit those to the city clerk so that those are part of the record.
Thank you very much, Director White?
Oh, with that, is there any disqualifications, requests for disqualification of Councilmembers? Hearing none.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again, our third rezon tonight. It's for a sixty-eight acre site, and it's just located south of Chapel Hill Boulevard, as you can see, and on the west side of Road one hundred. The existing zoning is a combination of office and C-one or retail zones. The request is to change that to a medium density residential, R-three, for a future subdivision on the property. The hearing examiner conducted a hearing on this matter in September and again, has forwarded a recommendation of approval for Council's consideration.
Thank you for that, do we have any questions, comments? Council? Councilwoman Serrano?
Director White, can you walk me through the graphs on the transportation impact analysis study that was done? I don't need details, but I see lots of X's, at least in some places, little X's in other places, then I see a map below that indicates there was heavy study up to the north side, up near the interchange, and it appears either minimal impact or minimal study down towards the south side, down towards Court. Can you explain? I don't know where the slide is, or maybe it's not up there, but in our packet, I think it's page fifty-four. Just help me better understand what we're seeing in front of us.
Councilwoman Serrano, I'm going to have a very difficult time walking you through the transportation impact analysis, especially the technical issues relating to the graphs. If that is important enough for Council's consideration, we can come back with an explanation from our brand new city engineer, and he can help you with that, but tonight, I'm not going to be able to do that with any you wouldn't want to hear what I have to say.
Okay, no, that's fine, because you know, seeing that this is several hundred new potential lots and seeing I I again, and I can't I can't analyze it if you can, because I'm certainly not skilled in planning. So I'll just simply say that, given this, the potential impacts, while we may discuss them at a later date if passed, I don't have the information in front of me to support moving forward on this, in fact, I oppose it.
Councilwoman Milm?
Yeah, I also agree with Serrano on this, I know I know he asked kind of question that I was hitting towards too, because I know in the morning when you come up Road one hundred, I mean, there's a lot of cars, depending what time in the morning you come up, and sometimes it's actually surprising how many people are going down Road one hundred to get onto the freeway, and I know we've talked about doing the you know, improving the freeway on ramp, off ramp. But my other problem is, if you look at the future Harris development, we got a lot of cars that are coming on that area too, and I guarantee you a lot of them will go down Road one hundred. So I just, it's just frustrating that you're putting two big developments in basically an area where most of them have bigger lots, I do know that we do need to have more infill, I understand that, it just it seems frustrating that having two bigger areas right just kind of squishing these neighborhoods in, so I also oppose this.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor Potemaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Director White, is traffic, is traffic impact considered as part of the rezon? By the hearing, we'll say by the hearing examiner and his recommendation?
Well, y- y- yes, it certainly is, and let me go back just a little bit of a step. Staff and our traffic consultants took a review of citywide traffic impacts when we addressed our comprehensive plan, well, it's been about two and a half, three years ago now, in in detail. It wasn't an on-the-ground level like the traffic analysis that Councilman Serrano mentioned, but it was, let's call it a ten thousand foot overview of transportation given the land use designations that were changed with the comprehensive plan. So yes, it was considered with the comprehensive plan, it wasn't considered on a site-by-site basis, but it was considered on a citywide basis.
And this is consistent with our comprehensive plan?
This is.
City manager, you have some comments?
I would just note that what you have in your packet isn't a traffic analysis per se, it's the scope of a traffic analysis. So your traffic analysis, to my knowledge, has not been done, but the letter dated August fourth is what the consultant proposes to the city, they would take into consideration in a subsequent traffic analysis.
Still have comments?
I do, I was making, I was wanting to make sure that Mr. Zabel's done.
Yeah, I'm done.
This is in compliance with our comp plan, we passed it as a body unanimously, as I recall. This is rezoning it to what we said we wanted rezoned here, to the northeast is commercial. It's, you can't get much of a better intersection in terms of where to put heavier residential than on a major arterial like Broadmoor. Yeah, we know we have some traffic issues. But also people are complaining about housing prices, the way you deal with housing prices is you build more houses, and this is building more houses, so I'm really not sure, I mean, there's always the, there's always the thought of not in my backyard. But we, the housing has to go somewhere, and this has great access. So I I don't see anything in this record here that would make me not want to vote to rezon this property in accordance with our, again, our comprehensive plan that we all agreed was right for the city planning, so that's where I stand, thank you.
Thank you, any further comment from Council regarding this issue? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. Sorry, making sure I'm on the right one, okay. I move to adopt ordinance number four six one seven, approving a rezon for a property lying south of Chapel Hill Boulevard and west of Road one hundred from O, Office, and C, C-one Retail Business, to R-three Medium Density Residential, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Nay.
Five yes, two no. Thank you for that, we move on to our next item on the agenda, item D, resolution number forty-two sixty-four, setting public hearing for right-of-way vacation at Court and Road sixty-eight, and Director Worley is online?
He is online.
Director Worley, can you hear us? Director Worley, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Jacob, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Director Worley, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present something a little bit different than what we do for normal, for Public Works. This is in regards to a property, a right-of-way area on the intersection of Court Street and Road sixty-eight. As Councilmen may remember, several months ago, we actually recently annexed this part of the city, or this part of this part of the area into the city from the county. And as part of our intersection project, we were, we are working with the property owners, and we recognize, as you can kind of see in your packets there, there's a, there's a rather oddly shaped piece of right-of-way. And so as part of our negotiations and as part of the project, we are proposing to vacate this right-of-way back to the property owners in the interest of of cleaning it up, so the city, this is an area the city does not need to maintain. And as part of our negotiations, a good faith effort saying, this is not a portion of right-of-way that we need or will need as part of future improvements. So we as a city do not wish to retain this in the interest of, yeah, not having to keep, make upkeep on it. We are proposing to to not do an appraisal, it's a very small triangle of area, about four hundred and eighty square feet. So per our city code, we are able to waive the appraisal and the value. However, we will be instituting a public utility easement on that area so that we can do any current and future utilities needed for this project and for future projects. So with that, we are proposing to set a public hearing, again, per our city code, to discuss this matter, and again, we have talked to the property owner, they have no issues with it, and that is everything, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that, Jacob?
Yes.
Any questions or comments regarding this matter? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas, I move to approve resolution number four-two-six-four, initiating vacation proceedings and setting seven o'clock PM, Monday, November twenty-first, two zero twenty-two, as a time and date to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of right-of-way lying north of the center line of West Court Street and west of the center line of Road sixty-eight.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Milm, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you again. Next item on the agenda, resolution number forty-two sixty-five, purchase and sale agreement for improvements on real property, Blazdale, PWRF, and we have Director Retka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council, this is a, not our typical real estate purchase here, so we'll walk through a little bit of history and a little bit of the topic at hand. In nineteen ninety-five, the city of Pasco purchased land for the process water reuse facility from the Blazdale family. At the time of purchase, the city and the original selling family entered into a five-year agreement to obtain a PUD easement and to provide allowances for the original owner to maintain residency on the property. Since the expiration of that aforementioned agreement, the original owner was allowed use of the improvements, personal property and leasehold interests on that property and remained a resident on that property using these personal property and leasehold interests up until two zero twelve. With recent efforts to expand and modernize the process water reuse facility, staff has approached the original family about acquisition of both of these improvements. After discussion and process and negotiation, a purchase price of twenty-five thousand was agreed to by both parties. The personal property and leasehold interests, really, it's, it comes down to a manufactured home or trailer and a forty-foot by sixty-foot shop, that's and uh, a forty foot by sixty foot shop, um, that's currently placed on that. Uh, Public Works Department that runs the process water reuse facility is looking to utilize these assets for their operations on the facility, since it is fairly, fairly far away out of town and away from the shops um, there as well. So purchase price of twenty five thousand dollars for a trailer and a forty by sixty shop. And I'll turn it over to questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Director Retka. Any questions or comments from council regarding this matter? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas, I move to approve resolution number four two six five, authorizing the purchase of personal property and leaseholds interest on uh, property located at five one five Blazdale Road, Pasco, Washington.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Wow, we're almost done with our agenda. Not quite. Item ten, unfinished business. None listed, we move on to item eleven, new bus-
We talked about C, we moved C to item ten.
Correct. The amendment. So we'll move on, we'll mo- we'll move on to uh, item for discussion, item C from our minutes earlier today. Here we are. Appointment process for city boards and commissions, um, and we have Ms. Borham, Borum on this.
I I can just jump in really quick if you'd like, so this is a item, uh, council discussed. Uh, just recently, observation being that uh, your selection process uh, was changed out of, out of necessity in compliance with uh, the law during the governor's emergency orders, uh, and proclamations uh, to be more of a subcommittee type assignment with uh, final recommendation of the mayor to the, to the council. Prior to that, it was full interviews by the, or interviews by the full council during public meetings. And council had a bit of a discussion uh, at a recent workshop uh, as to whether that system was working well or not, and uh, conclusion was that it was working well, and you wanted to uh, change your resolution uh, to reflect that uh, practice. And so what was submitted in the packet was, was some wording of that. Uh, Councilmember Serrano, over the weekend, actually had kinda noted to me uh, that he would like a little bit of work done on the um, qualifications, and he talked a little bit about that a few minutes ago uh, when we, when council pulled the item and moved it to item ten. Um, I advise that probably the best thing to do would be to pull it off tonight and be able to have that discussion tonight, because your original scope in revising the resolution was pretty limited in terms of the full council. So that's kinda where we're at right now, and I I guess uh, probably what's advisable now is a discussion among councils, whether or not you wanna get into the qualifications piece, how the selection criteria, and uh, and enhance that or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty simple and straightforward for me. When you look at subsection two, sorry, I just lost my place. Um, it talks about, you know, it seems to me meeting qualifications is the minimum threshold. Then we have four elements that the sub submit, so the subcommittee shall consider, geographic, gender, ethnic, and then uh, familial, familial and financial relationships. It doesn't point back to the most qualified. To me, I think if we're going to pre- create a prescriptive list of things and forego qualifications, um, again, I think section two, the way it reads to me is that's the minimum threshold. I think we should have item E echo that addresses the actual qualifications of the individuals. So I I think it's, it's, to me, it's a straightforward, it's simple, but if council opposes, so be it.
Councilman Campos.
Yeah, I I think Pete's comment is straight on, and the only reason why is, is it, we kinda have contradictory language in there. The last two sentences in section two, the council subcommittee shall select those candidate deemed best suited for their respective board of commission, which to me tells me the most qualified, right? But that's implied, it's not specified. And then it further goes through to say, well, in order to be the best qualified, you shall consider the following, and the following doesn't consider experience, et cetera. Now, on the other side of that sword, you know, for the subcommittees, we are struggling to get volunteers, and I, and I'm for it. I think the language is, is, is important to have there, but you know, having those additional things there, it kinda gives us the flexibility to evaluate if you have equally qualified candidates, you know, what, what can we do? Or, you know, I encourage anybody who doesn't think they're qualified for something to apply anyways, you know? Please do, uh, 'cause, you know, we can, and and you know, you might very well be the only applicant we have, and we might wanna just let you get some experience. Um, so I think that language is probably important, Pete, and and I applaud you for catching it, but I like I said, I think, I think that language was there, but it's implied in the first sentence, and then in the second sentence, that's when it gives you the hard constraints and it doesn't mention that, so.
Councilwoman Roach.
I just wanted to say that, um, I hear Councilmember Serrano's uh, concern with this, and also the second whereas does state, appoint qualified individuals to vacancies such as boards or commissions. Um, and the way that I read that section two is that it's to be taken into consideration. I think, I think that there's a slight word modification that could be done prior to those A, B, C, D that take into consideration, um, as opposed to making it sound like these are the only considerations. And, and I think we're there.
Any further comment? Count, uh, Mayor Perdambaloni.
I agree with Councilmember Serrano. Um, I I I, though, I guess by, uh, we're obviously we're works, we're workshopping this whole thing right here live, uh, but I I would, I would ask for staff to work our words into something real, um, as opposed to, I I could try to make an amended motion uh, to approve this, but I would, we don't think it's that urgent, I think I'd rather kick it back. But my recommendation would be, um, considers the so, the following factors are, um, consider the following factors such as in making this section, as well as add qualification. So I both agree and would amplify it by just making sure that we're considering, um, including, yeah, making making sure that this is not um, a explicit and only list for things that we can consider, but these are prime factors that we shall consider.
Mr. Ferguson, do you have any guidance?
Uh, you could just add, uh, lang- excuse me, the language, uh, shall consider, comma, including but not limited to, you could put something in there that would get you, uh, maybe close, but that might not be a full uh, throated a- aspect of of what Mr. Serrano's looking for, so certainly happy to go back and tweak it.
Okay. Councilman Campos.
I will just say, you know, we, uh, having participated now in several of these kind of discussions from these subcommittees, you know, that, it's an implied conversation with those of us who are doing it, but I I think to Pete's point, you know, we, we're not gonna be here at some point. We wanna set up a template essentially that somebody's going to follow in the future, so, um, not that we're not doing that now, I think, you know, to Pete's point, that's, that's what you're trying to capture. Am I right on that, Pete, is something that we're gonna use indefinitely?
Mr. Councilmember Brown.
Um, no, I just echo all that, but what was your statement? Can you give me what you just said again?
I was just suggesting that, uh, one of the possibilities could be after shall, uh, you could put a comma and say including but not limited to considering those factors.
That's kinda my route, um, is where I'm going with that, because it's, it's totally inclusive. Um, when you make these decisions in the HR world, all of that plays into effect. Um, so you have to balance it out, so I agree with Pete. Um, just that small clause would suit me just fine.
Okay. So I guess this goes back for review to, um, add that wording, or?
Yeah, I was gonna m- make a motion to table this until, um, our next business meeting, but I wanted nods from staff that this would be able to be done and we could incorporate, uh, Councilmember Serrano's, uh, suggestions in by, uh, it won't be the thirty first, it'll be the seventh, is there seventh or next business meeting?
I can certainly make sure it happened.
All right, um, so I I moved to table item, I guess, uh, ten ten A, I suppose, uh, regarding the appointment process for city boards and commissions until our next business meeting on, uh, November seventh, twenty twenty two.
There's, and there's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember, uh, Millie. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? And it's tabled for November seventh. Thank you again. Any other items for new items? None listed. Again, uh, item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel.
Nothing, nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening. We'll move on to item thirteen. Unfortunately, we do have a need for executive session, and we have three items. Can I get guidance as to how long? We have three items.
I think about fifteen minutes, it's not gonna take very long.
Fifteen. Okay, so, um, we will take a five minute break, um, and adding the fifteen minutes, so we'll be back in twenty minutes. However, here's the, um, items that we're gonna be discussing. The city council will now meet in executive session to discuss performance of a public employee per RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero LG and discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero LI and qualifications of an applicant candidate for appointment to elective office per RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero LH. And again, to return from executive session with that break in twenty minutes, so we'll be back at eight and nine, nine, ten. Thank you. It is nine, ten, and we will be needing another five minutes for, uh, our executive session to return at nine fifteen. Thank you. It is nine sixteen, and everyone is back from executive session, and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.